Mr. Denae, would you lead us in the pledge? Please take your hat off, put your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the equal opportunity of which it stands one nation, free, indivisible, without delay, and justice served.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
At this time, we'll observe a moment of silence.
Brekas, Zadra, Delgado, Dorch, Jarden, Shivi, Kishel.
Here. This time, we'll open up the public comment section. Marcy Cooper Smith?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Is that mic on?
Hello?
No, it's not on.
Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager. My name is Marcy Cooper Smith, and I am Vice Chair of the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee for the City of Reno. I would like to thank you for your continuing efforts in finding a way to fund our committee, especially in these difficult fiscal times. With your continued funding, our committee is able to help ensure that the seniors can continue to use the resources that are currently available to them, as well as activities and functions that will allow seniors to enjoy a decent quality of life. Keeping seniors active is key to their health and well-being, and with your assistance, our Senior Citizen Advisory Committee is able to do its best to ensure that seniors achieve an active lifestyle. So, thank you once again for finding a way to continue to fund us.
Thank you. Ted Lavater?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Ted Lavater for the record. I'll start with just some general thoughts on the budget process, the budget itself, and then I have some specific questions I'm hoping you guys could get answered for me as you go throughout the day today. Just in general, I know the city's interested in openness, transparency, and as much public participation as possible. I ran into some difficulties when trying to get ahold of the budget. I was given the runaround a couple of times, told I actually had to go to the state to get copies of the budget. When I finally did get a copy of the budget emailed to me from the city, the -- some pages were portrait, some were landscape, it was impossible to read digitally, so therefore I had to print it, all 145 pages plus. And then, once I printed it, I found out it really lacked the detail necessary for me to make a critical analysis of what this budget really entails. When I look at other cities' budgets, when I talk to people who have experience in this field, budgets would have footnotes or narratives that go along with these tables. This budget lacks all of that information. And just a couple of examples where it lacks detail. One example, I don't see anywhere on here where the $1 million to the ACIS Stadium, what budget item that's coming out of. You know, I see $200,000 in city clerk supplies, and I know they do a lot of printing there, but there's just no detail to say what exactly are we spending that $200,000 on that would allow a member of the public or somebody that is new to this process to really understand. So now, just some questions I was hoping you guys could have answered for me today. Number one, what constitutes council benefits? It's listed on here that council receives upwards of $300,000 in benefits a year, but it doesn't say what those benefits entail. So if we could get a detailed listing of what those benefits are. And along the lines of benefits, I noticed that, for example, council benefits are 64.5% of salary, finance benefits are 47.25% of salary. Are these salary-to-benefit ratios commensurate with what you'd see in other municipalities? Are they similar to what you would see in the private sector? That's salary-to-benefit ratios, or it seemed really high to me. Capital outlay is zero for every department except for one. That's the fire department has $300 in capital outlay. So, one, where's the capital outlay for the other departments? Two, what is the fire department spending $300 on that actually made it into the budget here? I don't see anywhere on here where you pay for outside legal services. I know the city gets outside legal services when it comes to negotiating contracts, that kind of stuff. I don't see anywhere in the budget where we're paying for that. I already asked a question about the ACIS Stadium. If somebody could explain where the $1 million for the ACIS Stadium is coming from. And then, finally, transfers from the general fund to the RDA. It's my understanding that there are some transfers coming from the general fund to RDA. Again, I don't find that anywhere in here. So if you could give me those details, and maybe as we go forward, look for a way to provide footnotes and narratives so the public could have a chance to understand this document. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denae.
Thank you. Sam Denae, I'm the encyclopedia of Reno government, and those were brilliant questions, and it really caught my ear when he said that, assuming it's true, that the privilege and benefits for the city council members is 65% of the income of your salary. So if the salary's $100,000, that means benefits are $65,000, assuming that's true. That's just absolutely, even the encyclopedia of Reno government, that is shocking information, that for every $10 you make as a salary, you get another $6 as extra perks, retirement, whatever else, travel to the -- oh, I know, and the caviar on the 15th floor, I forgot about that. Is that part of the 65%? We don't even know. At any rate, I want to welcome the students, the citizens from the various high schools around the community. I wish I'd brought more buttons, those lovely ladies, those wonderful ladies back there, and that one gentleman, they all have Sam buttons and wearing them proudly. They even have a Sam Denae music album that I gave them permission to put on their iTunes and their iPods and iPhones. At any rate, Sam, that's me, I've been, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, I've been to every city council meeting since any of those, before all of those students were even born. So if you can factor that into your brain, folks, before these, all of these students, any of these students was born, Sam started coming to the city council meetings, 1994, calculate that in there, 20 years. That's why Sam is the encyclopedia of Reno government. Sam knows everything. And you know what people hate, folks? People hate, people hate a know-it-all. They really hate a know-it-all. But you know what they hate more than a know-it-all? They hate a know-it-all who they know knows it all. That's Sam, right here. And in all of my, in all of my brilliance and erudite capabilities, I also maintain my humbleness. And I know that gentleman back there is appreciative of my humbleness. At any rate, Sam is an idea man. Oh, before I started coming to the city council meetings, I was air force fighter pilot and bomber pilot, and then I was a pilot for Pan American Airlines till my airline was blown out of business over Lockerbie. And I'm speaking in generalities now because I'll speak specifically when we get to the agenda items right now. Just wanted to give you the short introduction of who Sam Denae is. That's me, and excuse me for speaking in third person, it's just a habit that I got into. And the main reason I do it is I know that it irks the mayor and his pals up there. At any rate, Sam, oh, it doesn't irk you? I thought it did. Okay, I'll stop doing that. At any rate, Sam is an idea man. When Sam was in the air force, was in the air force, he created one, just one simple, brilliant idea that has saved the nation over $1 billion. Sam saved the Air National Guard for Reno, Nevada. If it wasn't for Sam's efforts, the Nevada Air National Guard wouldn't even be here. They wanted to get fighter planes, which was a crazy idea, F-16s. Sam told them to get the C-130s, that's what they got. So Sam saved the Air National Guard, 130 yard jobs and all of that. So Sam is an idea man, but do you think they ever asked me, you ever think they ever asked me to come and give them my ideas? Never.
Well, that's education for the classes here, that's okay. Here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, now we're going to go for approval of the agenda. Before we do, I would like to add him C. I'd like to make a change and take that out of order, and that would be the first one we will hear, and we have an explanation coming from staff of why we would take that out of order. Have a motion, second. Any further changes? All those in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, have all the notices been provided relating to RDA budget public hearing?
Approval of minutes.
Oh, I should do that, approval of the minutes. There I go, getting ahead of myself.
You can blame Sam.
Yeah, you've just gotten me so excited, Mr. Denae.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, second, discussion?
I have discussion for the May 13 meeting on page two, third paragraph, second to the last sentence. There's some discussion about some things that I said, and I mentioned that I had read that the asset forfeiture expenditures for the police department are done on a quarterly basis. I think the fund policy says that's an annual basis. I was wondering if that could be, that could be double-checked then.
I'll check.
Because that's what I recall the fund policy saying, and I thought that's what I said. So with that, call for the vote.
Make a motion for correction?
Call for the vote. If they'll make the, the motion would be if they'll check, double-check.
Motion, yeah, because this is discussion. The motion and second agreeable, do that change? Okay. Any others? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We will now go to item C. Madam Clerk, have notices been provided relating to the RDA budget public hearing? Ms. Thomas?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Ms. Thomas, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record. Kate Thomas, Office of Management and Budget. This item is being recommended to be continued to the June 5 city council and RDA meeting due to a publishing snafu, publishing, and notice was given, but because of the required timeframe, we feel that it's in the best interest of the public to have adequate time to comment on this public hearing, so we would ask that it be moved and continued to the, not moved, but continued to the June 5 meeting.
I'm going to open up the public comment section on this item if there's people here that want to speak on this item. Anybody want to speak on item number C, redevelopment agency one and two, year 13, 14 budgets? Yes, sir, Mr. Denae.
I just finished turning this in, I mean, I'll turn this in afterwards because--
That's very nice of you, sir, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Sam Denae, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and I didn't expect you to take this out of order, but now that you have, that's fine. And for the students, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for following the rules, because even though they're postponing it to later on, once the item is on the agenda, the citizens have the right to come up and address the agenda, even if they're not going to talk about it. So, I'm going to address the agenda relative to the approval of the redevelopment agency. What we are in right now, for those who don't know it, these folks are also, are the city council, but they're also the redevelopment agency. It was, it's very confusing to a lot of people. They are the same people. So the redevelopment agency has to do with, generally, stuff that's going on downtown. It has its own budget and that sort of thing. And I'm not here to speak for or against the redevelopment agency budget, since they're not going to address it anyway, but all I have to say about it in specifics is I, I have a feeling that there's probably some, there might even be some waste in the redevelopment budget. There might be some waste in there. The gentleman over there, I'm sure that he's, he follows this thing with a fine-toothed cone. I'm accused of using, coming to the podium and speaking like a shotgun. That gentleman over there, he comes up here with a sniper rifle, and I don't mean to sound like that's exotic, but that's just a figure of speech and an analogy. That guy knows what he's talking about. I come up here and just generally talk about a lot of the stuff going on. At any rate, I really didn't have that much to say, except as I close out, I would like to remind these students that if they're enjoying this meeting as much as they probably should be, there's another meeting at noon tomorrow.
Thank you very much. No other public comment cards, I'll bring it back to the table. We have a motion, let me have a motion to continue the public hearing to--
Move to continue this item for RDA one and two to the meeting on the--
June 5.
June 5, okay. Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item B1, public hearing regarding proposed assessments and approval of the levy assessments for fiscal year 13, 14 for the downtown maintenance district and downtown special police.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, will you open the public hearing?
Yes, I'm going to, since I read this.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yes. Let me open the public hearing first. What do you want?
Mr. Mayor, notices went out with the letters advising everybody that the public hearing would be at 3:30. So, that was the reason that we asked that the item C be moved ahead of B1, so--
Well, we're not at 3:30 yet, so we'll take--
We're about three minutes away, yes, sir.
We will, about four minutes by Waterbury, so we'll just take about three or four minutes and look at each other.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Everybody having a good time? No, you cannot speak, Mr. Denae.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be in recess for about five minutes till we catch up with time, and then we'll come back. Sorry for the late inning, but we'll be right back. Call the meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent and everything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay, we'll open up item B1, public hearing regarding proposed assessment and approval of the levy assessments for fiscal year 13, 14 for the downtown maintenance special assessment district and the downtown special police district. All right, now, let's go ahead. I'm going to call for public comment first before we go. On B1, Dobie? Is that your name, sir?
No, no, sir.
Shannon Dobbs. Shannon Dobbs, well, I couldn't read your writing, sir, I apologize. You come on up and speak on item B1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Apologize, sir.
City Council, good afternoon. My name is Shannon Dobbs, and I'm a business owner in the downtown Reno area. I do want to speak on item B1. I actually want to speak in favor of it. I think the idea of expanding the special assessment districts for police and maintenance is a good idea. I just wanted to very briefly put on the table for all of you the consideration that it is my hope that as that expansion happens, if it happens in fact, that the services that are being offered by using those funds don't get stretched out, and that they, that they do get used appropriately in the new areas, but also in the existing areas. There is dilapidated pavings in Fulton Alley, which happens to be storefronts to a couple of businesses. There's, you know, continued tagging issues in the downtown area that the, that the maintenance assessment is supposed to be able to handle. And, you know, it's my understanding that, that we have continued budget cuts that are, that are declining the services on those things, and it is just my hope as a business owner in the downtown area that, that we see an increase in those services if we get the expansion on the, on the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Galloway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Klinger, members of the council. This is my fourth or fifth time up here on this issue, and I'm willing to pay my fees, no questions asked. In fact, I would love to be able to pay a special privilege fee to be able to live downtown, if there was some demonstrated value for that fee. Bring it on. Let people come downtown, want to come downtown. But what happened in 1996, when this original police tax district was established, and then later on, the maintenance tax district, the structure of downtown has changed so much. And I think it's just a little unfair on who's paying for what. I don't believe any of you pay for either of the districts, however, right now, you're benefiting by Chief Pitts, by the maintenance out in front, and everything. So I'm paying, in essence, for what you're benefiting for. And I think the downtown of every city should be paid for by its residents, all of them. So I'm not, not too happy paying the extraordinary amount. As an individual, I'm only paying this year $4.21 a day, or $1,536. But I think that's a little exorbitant, if we're trying to get people living downtown for an individual to pay over $1,500 to live here. But I say a special fee, you know, let me carry a drink from one bar to another because I live down here and that's my special fee. I am concerned about one safety and health issue, though, that's not being addressed by either of these districts. And it, it shows a change in the structure, and that's the CAC. We've moved the CAC in here, and it's already been filled to capacity since the excess shelter has been closed. Last summer, I had a bunch of the homeless sleeping across the river from me, and I understand the laws that if the, if the CAC is filled, people can be anywhere. I don't know how you want to address that, but I think that's a, a health and safety issue, and I'm paying all these dollars, that you just can't overlook and say, that's out of our hands. So, if someone's addressing that, I hope so. Maybe some dollar shift, I, I don't know. But it's a concern of all of us that live downtown on what happened to the homeless. We all are concerned about them, but health and safety for us. Thank you very much.
No, thank you, appreciate you. No other public comment cards on this section, I'm going to close it, bring it back to the table. Staff?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Klinger, Steve Hardisty, Public Works, Assessment District Coordinator. Before you today is the acceptance of the proposed budgets for the assessment, for downtown maintenance district and the maintenance, downtown maintenance and the downtown police district. Regarding the police district, we received $1,315,196 last year, increasing that by the CPI of 1.7%. Next year's proposed budget will be $1,337,554. The total assessed value for the police district last year was $150,867,000. Next year, it's estimated to be at about 147, 150, yeah. And then, this year, it's estimated to be 147 million. So it's going to go down about, about three, possibly four million dollars. The, last year, we used the three areas. In area one, the cost per hundred dollars of assessed value was 1.03. Area two, which was .83, and then, area three was .718. The proposed cost per hundred dollars of assessed value for next year will be .9097. For the maintenance district, last year, we, our revenue came in with $205,015. The 1.7% increase will make it $208,500. The assessed value for the district was $73 million, and the proposed for next year is $71.5 million. Last year, for a hundred dollars of assessed value, it was 27, well, 27.3 cents, and this year's proposed to be 29.1 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That's all I have. I'm here for any questions you might have.
All right. Bring it back to the table for discussion, any questions? Well, Chair, will you entertain a motion to approve staff's report?
Yeah, I'll move to approve staff's recommendations.
Have a second, have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item B2, we have somebody that'd like to speak on item B2, Mr. Denae.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, since this is our budget hearing, could you formally close that portion for B1 of the hearing, public hearing?
We did with a vote, didn't we?
Let's have an official record that it's closed with the vote.
Okay. Somebody give me a motion to close--
Yeah, all you have to do is, mayors, indicate that you've closed the public hearing now that the vote has been taken.
Okay, I've closed public hearing on item B1. Now we'll go to item B2. Mr. Denae.
Sam Denae, the encyclopedia of Reno government, and what we have here for the students out there is, right, in the next couple of minutes, they are going to vote, I can almost see behind there, there's rubber stamps sitting there, but anyway, they're going to get ready to vote for the entire budget for the city for the next, for the upcoming year. And everybody knows that everybody hates taxes. But there's one thing that Sam hates worse than taxes, Sam hates to see taxes misspent and wasted. The purpose of government, the purpose of government is to protect the citizens. So the number one issue that should be addressed at this budget, or one of the top issues anyway, should be the concept of police and firemen. And everything I see and everything I read shows me, portrays the fact that we are understaffed in police and understaffed in firemen. I think we should find a way in this budget to hire more firemen and more policemen. She's looking askance. Maybe we are not under, maybe we have enough firemen, I don't know. Maybe we have enough policemen. I have to admit, we haven't had too many killings and houses burned down lately, but it's still, we need more firemen. We have a lot of these, this budget is directed on things that I call flapdoodle. Some of this stuff is very important, but some of this stuff is not that important. I just want to make sure that, that the firemen and the policemen are giving first-rate consideration in this budget. And one of the ways I guess we could maybe do that is to reduce that 65%, apparently, the 65% that the city council is getting, that goes on top of their, of their salary, according to that gentleman who was over here. If you want to challenge that, come up and say so. But that's far, far too much overhead and perks beyond the salary. Also, I see the judges over here, and my, my dear father, Dr. Denae, on his dying death bed, he said, "Son, always be nice to judges." So what I'm saying right now, without even looking at the budget, I want you to approve what the judge is asking for right there. And even though Sam is recommending that, I don't want you to not do that, just because Sam recommended it. At any rate, the last thing that I would like to have you people try to consider, is somehow to budget, somehow to find a way to hire some honest, some honest reporters, some reporters who are not deathly afraid and jealous of Sam Denae. Let's get some honest reporters out there who are ordered to report the truth. Sam is the only person who comes to the podium year after year, week after week, and reports important stuff, but these cities, these students out here probably never even heard of Sam because the media is too deathly afraid and jealous of Sam to report his erudite truths.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments?
There is none.
Seeing none. Did we officially open this part?
Not yet.
Okay, we'll officially open the hearing for the budget item. Any, anything from staff? Any further?
I did, for the record, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Thank you. Kate.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Manager, and students. Welcome. I am here today as Kate Thomas from the Office of Management and Budget to walk us through the final process of the lengthy budget adoption. So as Mr. Denae-- So as Mr. Denae alluded to, this is the final step, although I don't know if there are rubber stamps, that would be awesome. But as you can see here by the slide showing that we have gone through quite an open and laborious process to get to where we are today, which is the budget adoption, with some discussion from council. So as you can see for the edification of those that are watching or in the audience, we started off in February with the City Council setting forth the direction that the city should follow as far as going through the budget process, and that is with their strategic planning session. We then went back to the departments and solicited from them some of the ideas and concepts and revisions that they wanted to see based on last year's budget, and went through those changes, brought those changes and recommendations to a series of management and executive team review, and came forward with what we have as the city manager's recommended budget. We then went into a series of council workshops, so that we could walk, especially some of the newer council members and the public, through the process as far as how we got from the tentative document to where we are today. And I'll go into a little more detail on that as we proceed. But just for everyone's edification, this is the process that we followed. We're at darn near the tail end with the little snafu. We do have the RDA 1 and 2 budgets that are coming back in June. But essentially, the city's budget will be adopted at this meeting. So to walk you through what this meeting actually looks like, for those of you that are newer or for the folks watching, it really, there are really three sections every year that you will see as part of the budget adoption process. The Special Assessment District hearing, which you saw, which is tied by statute to the tentative document or tentative budget hearings that we're having today. And then we go through that tentative process, which has the document due to taxation by April 15th, which is really a very first preliminary cut at what our budget looks like. From that, submittal of the document to taxation, we then go through those workshops to determine any modifications, put the information together, take a last crack at what revenues look like going forward and so forth, and we do that up until, geez, this morning. Put together what we feel is a solid document bringing forward for adoption, open the public hearing, which we're going through right now. We'll incorporate any changes, and then we will get that document to the Department of Taxation by the due date of June the 1st. So right now, we're going to walk through the adoption of the city budget, which has, of course, the fee resolution and tax levies, which the City Council has a copy of, and there's been one made public. And then, of course, as I alluded, the adoption of the RDA budgets go forth on June 5th. Here, and I apologize if it's a little small to see, but here are really the bulk of the changes that you will see, incorporating what council has discussed via the workshop process, and what has occurred, as I mentioned, behind the scenes, as we take a last snapshot look at the revenues and where we project those to be, some of the charges for service, other things. So for instance, we have the licenses and permits. We've taken the amounts that we had originally submitted in the tentative document and revised those based on where we stand now. And so you can see that we've made several adjustments that were put in to balance the tentative document. But as we go through this process, we have removed those or more adequately aligned them in the areas for which they need to be located. We also, based on some information we got for February consolidated taxes, we reduced the C-Tax number that we're anticipating receiving for this fiscal year, which then affects next fiscal year, which we're still projecting at a 2.5% over the current. Charges for service, again, I go back to the adjusting of those amounts based on the tentative document. And then some of the other things you see here, fines and forfeitures. We align those with the Special Assessment District information that Mr. Hardy presented in the previous item, as well as taking the miscellaneous and other financing sources which weren't, which were located in other financing sources and move those up into the appropriate document areas in the budget. So if you were to put this document next to the tentative document, you would then see what the final will reflect. Those were all the sources that I covered. And then where those sources were applied is the uses. We took the salary and wage, the sunsets that I mentioned at the previous workshops, the frozen positions that council, or that the city manager put into place, and then we took the, some of the adjustments and moved those around, as you can see there, as well as the insurance premium four-month holiday that we're taking, the additional positions that were added for graffiti abatement, and the frozen positions, those things have been aligned as well. Some budget balancing items for the services and supplies, it was the $500,000 amount, which is comprised of the capital outlay, services and supplies, and some other areas is where we get that $500,000 worth of savings from the departments, which we went back and asked for as part of the budget balancing mechanism. And then finally, we went back to our ending fund balance, which was essentially, this year, we brought in more, so that puts and adjusts our next year ending fund balance. So with that, those are the general fund. And then council has a packet of all of the funds. I wanted to highlight here during the public process, the general fund most specifically. You have the packet that includes all of the changes from the tentative document to the final. That's there, it's been made public as well. And so with that, I'm going to overlay here the city of Reno tax rates, so that you can see where we stand with those. As part of the adoption and the resolution, we do specifically call out that we've got the tax rates, so there were no changes made to these, just for clarification. And then again, I want to remind council before we launch into discussion that we do have some targets that we are going to try to shoot for. This is the public announcement that one of their top goals for us fiscally is to get into alignment with our fund balances and some of our other unfunded liabilities that we've got. You've heard me mention this slide in every workshop. I will leave this up here as I close out and ask the council for any more direction or decisions on the budget process at this time.
Any questions, council members, anything?
Mr. Mayor, just in reference to public comment that we heard prior to, in general public comment today, that the difficulty for accessing online, can you please describe each of our meetings and what's been available and the document itself, the process and programming?
Certainly. For the record, Kate Thomas. So what Mr. Lovato was referring to was his copy of the state tentative document, which is the document that I mentioned is essentially a placeholder. And so that is due by April 15th every year. It's not the most clairvoyant of documents. It does have what's barely necessary, as indicated by the state, for us to submit as part of a tentative process. From that, we then go through the workshops, as you mentioned. So we did call out any changes from the budget last year to the budget this year, so that folks can see kind of what changed. We don't have all of the narrative that he was referring to, the performance measures and the narrative and all the explanations. That's being built following this workshop. As we go, as you know, the document itself is not published until August, September timeframe, because we then take the direction or the decisions from council, once they adopt the final budget, and continue to build those other sections. So as you know and are aware, we went through and vetted very publicly the process for which we came to the balanced budget. And as you're all aware, we started off with a pretty significant sizable hole that we had to fill, because the expenditures are outpacing the revenue gains that we're seeing. And so those were the things that we incorporated through the series of public meetings.
And then could you just briefly add a quick reference to the other public transparency for the management of our checkbook and that we're the only agency to be front and forward with all of our expenditures?
Certainly. I believe it was in last June that we came forward with the online checkbook. We've got the online payroll. We have multiple opportunities for the public and internally to look at what the city's finances are. We have the anticipation of bringing forward contracts online, so that folks can see the contracts that the city has and so forth. But under Reno.gov, I think it's transparency, or there's a link on the homepage, I know, we've got those items online for all to see.
Mr. Mayor, if I might follow up on Councilwoman Zadra's questions. We did add a hearing this time. As council will remember, we had an extra hearing in April. What we did at the April hearing was gave an economic overview and a, what I would call a 30,000-foot view of the budget. We didn't get into department detail. And then we had the May 6th and the May 13th meeting, where we went through each department and identified through a presentation to council. While we don't have narrative in the state document, we did go through the narrative of what the changes were within each budget, line by line, compared this proposed budget to last year's budget, and went through each one of those. And for those listening on the web, it's Reno.govopen is where you can find our open information.
And to clarify that, open information includes a breakdown of all salaries and benefits, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I want to thank you for all the hard work your office has done, and all the departments who put together the preparation of this budget. I know it was a lot of hard work and hard decisions to make. We also have the Financial Advisory Board that recommended that this council adopt this budget, but had a pretty strong caveat that the budget was built upon some one-time presumptions of cost-saving measures that are not sustainable. Would you agree with that analysis?
And we've mentioned that via the workshop process, that a lot of those opportunities that we've used to balance this year's budget won't present themselves in future budgets. So we do have to look at our expenditure levels in detail, so that we can prevent further needs for cuts without reductions in force.
Are you thinking, you know, in this next year, kind of working through some of the issues and raising some of those to us on, I mean, are you kind of thinking of a strategic plan to start looking at some of those?
Yeah, exactly. So the strategic plan is a good starting point. As I mentioned at the last public workshop, the fund policies is one of the strong points that we're going to begin with as soon as the budget process winds down here, taking a look at what our priorities are for new revenues. So we have a priority list of where new revenues will go. Obviously, fund balance being something that we really need to get into alignment, so that we don't have to go back to looking, you know, as Mr. Mayor so fondly called the meat cleaver approach, to kind of, you know, cutting various areas, because we didn't really want to go down the path, or should go down the path, of reducing any of our already slim workforce. So yes, we, fund policies being one of those areas that we certainly want to look to, to prevent us from getting to the situation in the future.
Any other questions right now? Mr. Manager, you know, we had the Senior Advisory Board, we were doing some adjustments to that. What would it take us to do to adjust back so that we could get them to the $25,000?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, if I remember correctly, and Kate can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the original recommended reduction was $11,800.
Correct.
I believe at the last meeting, we restored $6,900 of that. So that would leave roughly $5,000 to restore them back fully to what they had in the current fiscal year.
What would it take us to bring Art Town back up to the $25,000?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as you know, the budget includes funding for Art Town directly in the amount of $100,000. That is down from the $125,000 that has been included in the budget in the past. So if council's direction was to put that back in the budget, as you can see from the slide up here that Kate has left up, we have an ending fund reserve of $6.5 million at 4.4%. By law, we're required to have 4%. Staff would, has set a goal and would like to see us at the 8.3%. So if we were to fund seniors and/or Art Town, it would have to come out of that ending fund balance. You know, $40,000 out of the ending fund balance is not huge, but again, we have set a goal of 8.3%.
And I agree with your goal. I think that eventually, that's where we need to be, is at that 8%, because that would be about two months of operating expense, and that's where we should go. But I was just bringing it up consideration. Couple of the council members had talked about reinstating the discretionary money used by council, since we've done things with the NAB. This gives them the money to work with their NABs and things like that also. So that would be about $35,000, something like that.
We had also discussed council give back of approximately 2.7% of the automatic increase that we have to take. Is that factored in?
We have not factored that in. It was my understanding from the previous meeting, when that action was taken by council, that that was an individual council member's decision. And so until we have those decisions in hand, we have not reflected that in the budget before you.
Okay. But if we made an assumption that we did get that back, how much would that total?
If you were to, I think it was, the full give back of certain pieces was around $65,000. And that was for, I believe that included the PERS increase as well.
And I guess what I would add is, if we're going to assume that, I would hope that the council would take some action to make sure that's, that the money's going to be there.
Well, that's why I bring it up, so that we maybe can have that discussion.
And then when we do, to make sure that that money is allocated to where we want, that it doesn't go back into the general fund?
It would cover one of these items.
Right. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for bringing up seniors. I think that it is imperative that they get funded, that they do not take a backseat in our city. Many of them live on about $12,000 a year. So any assistance, I think, is critical, and I really appreciate you bringing it to the table.
And I didn't do it, because I'm one of them. Anything else? I personally would like to see us, I'd like to see a motion to reinstate the Senior Advisory Board, the $5,000 getting them up. And I would also, Art Town is such a special event in this community, that I personally think that we should reinstate that. And then because we are taking the money away from the NABs, I think that we should reinstate the money we use for discretionary funds, because that's what it's for, is to help our NABs and different things like that. And I would hope that we could do that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to clarify, so it would be $5,000 for seniors, $25,000 for Art Town, $35,000 in council discretionary funds, for a total of $65,000.
Yes, and I'll give up my car allowance, and I'll give up myself on the allowance.
And also, we have also talked about giving up our council funds for seniors. So they will have more than what we had originally proposed.
All right. Any discussion about what I brought up?
And what funding, where would this come out of? Cash in balance?
Come out...
Is there any appetite to pull that out of the two areas that I identified at our last meeting? I really believe that maintaining strong on building up that fund balance is key. I absolutely think that it is indisputable in local government finance area and practice. And the fact that it's touched is troubling to me. And I identified the attorney's services and supplies. I think we could work hard. This year, we saw some things that we had to budget last year out of that item. And I identified the speed bump program, where I would hope our RTC representatives would advocate for some sort of restoring that program through the RTC budget. So I'd rather see it frankly, come out of those two spots, and maybe half and half.
Well, I personally, I just think that speed bumps that we put in around town have been very beneficial to this community, and I'd hate to see us take that. In fact, we should have more in there. And I don't mind working with RTC or whoever does it. But I don't think taking $75,000, is that what it was? $65,000 out of the, tried to get another 10 there. Out of the 6506 up there, doesn't really hurt us. We do need to get to the 12, I'll agree with that somewhere down the line. But I think it makes it real simple if we take it out of the 6506.
I just have a question on the Art Town, the 120, the 100 versus the 125. My only concern in giving the full 125 is that all of our other special events have gone to a purely in-kind only donation. I'm not trying to compare apples and oranges, but I'm being very conscious of the fact that a number of other special events have taken a bit of a cut.
Here, here.
And so I do have some concern with fully, the full 125. I'm not advocating for not doing something, but I'm not sure it sends the right message to the rest of our special events.
I won't disagree with you.
And Mr. Mayor, that would be my comment as well. We've asked everybody to take a shaving, except for this particular event. It's an incredible event. I've been a supporter, as you know, since day one, but we've never asked for a cut from them. And I'm just uncomfortable that we've selected one over anything else to bring out, to leave whole. I'm hopeful that we can be of assistance to them through our various committees, be it special event or arts and culture, to go out and fill that gap. They have a branding recognition now that would put them in a position to be able to, not that they aren't already struggling to, you know, continue to maintain their existing maintain their existing supporters and grow it, but it's just a, a bit uncomfortable for me to select one alone.
Okay. Ms. Shivi?
I think too, well, the arts are a quality of life for many people that live here. Art Town is one of those events that people don't pay to come and see. So, and it's also an international event. And I, and I understand that everyone, you know, has, has taken a cut. This has not been easy. This, this budget process has definitely been an eye-opener, especially for the new council that has come in. It's really, really, really hard to sort of decide who gets one and who doesn't. I, I do worry about the arts, like I said, because it is a quality of life for many people. And a lot of people that come, that enjoy that are on a fixed income. But also with inside Art Town, it's not just Art Town, you know, there's a lot of different groups with inside Art Town. Little, you know, Suzie puts on her dance troupe, you know, Johnny goes over here and does his art. These are ways for artists to really express themselves. So I, I do worry about Art Town, and I worry about the arts in general. However, right now, I know that, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we're, we're looking at. And so, and special events is really difficult. But from what I understand, we're moving some money over to special events so that we don't, we, we're not having that issue. Is that correct, Andrew? Or Kate? Sorry.
Just for clarification, and I want to make sure everybody understands, that the reductions to Art Town, the Pioneer, Arts in Public Places, the mechanism for how we accomplish that is the room tax money going into special events, and then the special events doesn't increase by any, by any sense of the word. That money then comes out of special events to use for general fund. We can't take room tax and apply it generally to operating. And so the way that we get those cuts, or the reductions to arts into the general fund operating, is by putting it into special events because there's a nexus between tourism and those room tax dollars. So that's not an additional reduction in arts.
And, okay, not an additional...
No, or an additional interest, or, or, not an additional amount to special events either. Special events doesn't change.
Okay.
So that's how that works. It's just a conduit.
Okay. And not to jump around here, but does RTC allocate, for you guys that are on the board, money towards projects, city projects?
You've got a discretionary fund.
You do?
There's, there's certain areas it can go to, it's defined. I'm not sure exactly what, but we do have some discretionary funds.
Is that something that we could look into as far as the speed bumps and, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what that entails.
I think we just have to find out where those funds can be spent.
Okay. Do you have any idea?
There are federal limitations because it's, it's tax, yeah.
It's the type of money it is, it's, it's limited in where it can be spent.
Okay. And how much is it? Do you know? Any idea?
20.
20 each year? 20, okay. Each year?
10, 10 and 10. There are two different pockets, 10 and 10.
Okay. All right. Sorry to jump around. I, we just had sort of skipped over that. All right. Thanks.
May I just make a proposal that, you know, we did make special events a priority of this council at our strategic planning session, and, and not playing maybe favorites of one over the other, but still recognizing the significance of arts in our community, that maybe we split the baby and do 12-5. I, I don't know how everyone feels. And do we take this? This is my first time at this. Do we take each one of these changes one at a time, or are we all together? How do we do this?
Yeah.
Okay.
However you want to do it.
I think that's a reasonable balance.
Kate, could you, could you share with us, out of the arts and council budget and the grants that they identify, how much of those go toward Art Town? In addition to the 125 that, that we've given, how much more do they receive in total from any, any other operation?
So for 2013, the city support for Art Town included the festival sponsorship at 125,000. There was a $15,000 Arts and Culture Commission opening and closing night sponsorship. There was 41,650 in cultural event grants for the July programs. And then there was 9,500 in in-kind support. So approximately 66,000 additionally to Art Town from other city sources. Is that what you were asking?
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Delgado?
I appreciate you, again, stating support for the seniors and covering that gap, which is essential in reallocating the funds for council funds back to the 10,000 mark. As we know, the CPGs are going to be taken away, and groups are still going to need support from us and looking at us for support. So I think that's vital. I understand as well that a lot of different groups are taking cuts. So splitting, splitting it down the center, I think would be, I, I, I see as something that's doable. I understand too, there's been a lot of support for Art Town. But again, excuse me, as Councilwoman Shivi stated earlier, it's, I see it different in the sense where it's a lot local, very, very local driven, more than, the majority of the events are, are free to the community. We support the small groups around town that are trying to do the ballets and everything else. So if we can hopefully get the support for at least half of those that are taken away, that'd be great.
So if, if you guys have an appetite for half, where, where would you like the other money to go? I'm just concerned. I, I just think that Art Town is, is something that is, is an international success for us, and economically, I think it brings a lot. So I'm just sort of curious that if you guys want to do 12-5, then where would you suggest the other?
Just leave it in.
You want to leave it there?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if I might, just to... Just to reiterate, just, just for clarity, to make sure I understand what we're talking about. 5,000 for seniors, 12,500 for Art Town being restored, council discretionary funds at 35,000. That brings the total to 52,500. So it would take the 6,506, 683 in ending fund balance and reduce it by 52,500. That's where it would come from.
Right.
Except, if we can get the numbers for the give-back from the council, what, what does that come to at, at a minimum? And I understand that each council member can choose to give more than the giving back, the automatic raise and the 1 percent of the PERS. What, what does that base figure come up to?
I have Mr. Chisel getting those numbers for me right now. So if we can give him a couple of minutes, he can get back and give us the exact number.
Okay.
I'll take the moment then to raise an issue since we're getting into the weeds here. On tomorrow, we're poised to take a step towards taking on more, I don't know if it's medium or long-term debt for the fire station down in southeast Reno, $900,000 in a bond. And I just want to ask Mr. Manager that that is your recommended course of action, rather than taking $900,000 out of the budget stabilization or anywhere else in this budget?
Correct. That would be my recommendation. And we are already, as you can see from the graphic up here, our stabilization fund has already been reduced 400,000 in previous years. You know, it's been, I think the current year, it was 2.8 million. And we actually used all of the 2.8 million in the current year to balance due to shortfalls in some of our revenues. So to, to take it out of the 1.7 and drop that down to, you know, 600,000, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with that.
Okay. I just want to be clear because, you know, those of us who are coming on new are, tomorrow is taking a step to increase the city's debt load.
And, and I will add, and I said this before, but just for the, so the record's clear, that the debt service payments for that are built into this budget.
I assume Robert is still looking for the, adding up those figures. I'm like, putting him, putting him on the spot. While he's doing that, can I get some points of clarity with regards to the hiring and free, hiring freeze and how that is or is not affecting the attrition of the patrol police officers and the positions that we have on the table?
Chief?
And Mayor, I can add to this because I, I think, I think council has, has made it very clear in the, in the workshops and, and in the hearing that we've had, that they don't want to see further vacancies in the police department. So I guess the direction that I've received from these hearings is that we will hold the four positions vacant, but if there's additional attrition, again, now that, that depends on payoffs because, you know, depending on payoffs to make sure we can cover payoffs, but we will make an effort to fill any additional vacancies beyond the four, as long as we have enough to cover the, the payoffs.
Okay.
And then the other thing I will say is, you know, this budget is based on projections. It's based on projections of C-Tax, you know, business license fees and other things. And we're constantly evaluating. And if six months we look at it and cross our fingers, our C-Tax projections are higher than where we're at today, there's a possibility that we can release even the four that we're holding vacant. I mean, I, I can't say that that's going to happen. And based on what we know today, we don't have enough funds to do that. But things can change in six months if the economy improves.
And I would just encourage, I mean, I think it is imperative, a lot of us do feel this way, about the position of the police officers, that, how, how does that typically work to also continue with the attrition and, because as they retire, then we're not bringing them back. And those 10 are just the new that we're supposed to come already. Is that correct?
Councilwoman, I'm sorry. I missed, I missed part of it. I was distracted.
Oh, the, the 10 that we're bringing in is just the 10 that we were supposed to bring in already, and not addressing the ones that are retiring?
Right. And I think that's what we're committing to, is there's, there's 10, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, there are currently 10 vacancies. Six of those have been approved to, to fill. We're holding four of them vacant. And, and what I've heard from this council is that if there are more retirements and create more vacancies beyond the four, that we will make an effort to fill those once we've been able to cover any payoffs that we might have.
Okay.
Steve Pitts, on behalf of the men and women of the Reno Police Department, Mr. Mayor and Council. That is correct. There are 10 vacancies that are based on, those are positions of attrition. And we have got direction to fill six of those. And, and if something works out, we'll fill those other four, as, as Mr. Klinger has explained.
Mr. Delgado? Did you have something? Ms. Shivi, did you get your answer? Okay.
I think Mr. Chisel's ready.
Is Mr. Chisel ready? Mr. Chisel, would you please come?
Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance Administration. The information requested, the 1.7 percent salary increase for council amounts to approximately $8,056 per year. And the 1 percent PERS is approximately $4,820 per year for a total of $12,875.
Okay. So can we, at the, at the very least, make that supportive? Oh, wait, I'm getting a nod that that may not be the right figure.
Ms. Chisel, on the, on the PERS increase, the document that you handed me has a different number on it for the cost.
That was funny.
Has a total of 11,552 in PERS increases. Just for PERS increases with the 8,056 in salary increases. If I'm wrong?
Well, Robert Chisel, again, if 1.7 percent is 8,000, 1 percent would be approximately 48.19, so.
That's the full 2 percent.
Yeah, so there...
So that's the total number we need to make up, is about 12,000?
Yeah, the 11,552 represents the 2 percent increase. What Mr. Chisel quoted was the 1 percent share of, for council of that.
Okay.
Okay. So, and, and with the clear understanding for the public, the, the percentage increase, the 1.7 percent salary increase that the council will get July is not something that we have within our control to not take. So in other words, we have to take it, then turn around and give it back. So I think the council has been supportive of, at the very least, giving that, that one, that CPI 1.7 percent increase and the 1 percent PERS. So of your 50-something thousand gap, we just made approximately 13 at a minimum. And I understand each council member can choose to give back more, but at a minimum, we've done that.
Sounds right to me. So it looks like it'd be down with a, just about 40,000?
Yeah.
Covered?
It's, it's roughly that. Well, the chair would entertain a motion to reinstate the seniors with 5,000, to reinstate 12 and 1/2 to Art Town, and 35 for the council's discretionary fund to be able to use with NAB meetings and stuff like that. So would somebody give me that motion?
So moved.
Yeah. You got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Second. Second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Show the vote. Unanimous. Passing. All right. Any other discussion right now?
I just...
Yes, we do. We're going to. No, we're going to. We're going to.
I just have, I just have one more question. And I think, Mr. Manager, you clarified it for me. When we, at the point in which we just decide what we're doing with regards to parking, whether it's a new system, if it's to our free parking, whatever, enforceability is going to be a huge issue, which means manpower and personnel, when and if, if it's in this next year, where would those funds come from to properly enforce whatever new parking system we employ?
Well, it, yeah, it depends on if there was projected parking revenue that would help support it. I think the, the analysis that we've done is that, that that does not fully support the activity. So any gap between putting in a new system and whatever additional parking revenue we would generate and/or enforcement would likely come out of the 1.7 million dollars in stabilization funds. I mean, that's likely the source that we would recommend to council.
Ms. Dart, you want to give me a motion to approve the budget?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendations with the changes that we just made on the 13, 14 budget.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimity. Resolution. Wait a minute. I don't usually let people speak on resolutions, so I'll let you speak on the budget, Mr. Today B2. Resolutions, we don't speak on.
Sam Today, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, I don't want to be objectionable, but if you can't speak on a resolution, what is the worst, why do you even come here? Resolutions is what this is all about, among other things.
You go ahead.
At any rate, I'll be very brief.
Thank you.
For the, for the folks in the audience and out there on TV land, we are talking about, to put it in perspective, we're talking about $170 million planned budget, and he's nodding his head. That number has not been mentioned, and we haven't even come close to it. We have a number, 23 million up there. That's pretty big. But 170 million dollars, but I want to put in the perspective of, for the folks who might not have understood what was going on there. And I don't want to come down on Art Town again, but we have the beloved Art Town that after 12 years and approximately $2 million of handouts from citizens' taxes to this free operation, after 12 or 13 years, they should be able to stand on their own. Hot August nights, street vibrations, the air races, organizations that bring in money to the community from outside, whereas 90 percent of Art Town is Reno money being diverted from maybe other nightclubs or other operations down to a city, a, a city-operated, overseen, subsidized operation. And I, I just is wrong. And I've come up here every, virtually every year to speak against this corporate welfare for Art Town. And they're all getting hot because they love Art Town. Art, well, he's not getting hot, good. Tell, tell the people how much money the air races get from City Hall. Tell them, people, how much money Hot August Nights, play operations that bring in huge amounts of money to the coffers of the community, outside money versus the money that Art Town brings in. If they do bring any money in, it's internal money. So it's scavenging off of other operations. So Art Town has, and they say it's an international thing. Yeah, the only reason it's international is because they take our taxes and hire people from other countries to come here and play here. We've got enough talent in this town right here, including myself, that could take care of Art Town and have just as much fun and just as many people going down there. So I, you spent half an hour talking about $25,000, and I think you, I think you ended up adding another $12,000 to... up adding another $12,000 to Art Town. Oh, she said, no, okay. Okay, you didn't. Okay. The lady's gone now, but even, you're not adding anything more. Art Town is only, only getting the 100,000. Is that it? In the senior citizens?
112,000.
How much?
112.
So it sounds like 12,000 more was added to the original 100,000?
That's right, not 25.
What?
Not 25.
I know, I didn't, I don't think I said 25. You wanted 25, you made it. Anyway, I don't want to go there. At any rate, you gave 12,000 more and you're only giving 5,000 more to the seniors who are far more important than Art Town. I just don't think you should be doing. And why don't you tell the folks what the salaries of those, that Art Town director makes?
Uh, Mr. Denae, uh, the budget you said was 170 million?
I know, 169.
It's only 64.
What?
It's only 164.
I know. 169, unless my eyes are bad.
No, no, it's 164. But that's okay. I just wanted to...
64?
I wanted to set it straight for you.
My eyes, okay, I stand corrected. It's only 164,000, not 170, I mean, million, million.
Thank you. Resolution?
Resolution number 7860. Resolution adopting the fiscal year 2013-14 budget, including tax levies and adopting the fee schedule for the city of Reno, Nevada for the fiscal year 2013-14.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. We are now down to public comment. Mr. Denae?
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and as long as the students had to stay here all of this time, and Sam stayed here all this time, they ought to have at least a little bit more of the Sam Denae Show to tell their friends back at school about next week, right, Mr. Mayor?
Y'all really want to hear?
And the Mr. Mayor.
Nevermind.
Yeah. That's the only reason they stayed here. They would have been, that one fellow back, oh, he's still asleep. Don't tell the teacher, though.
They were leaving, but they...
Don't tell the teacher.
They're very, they're very polite. They're, they're staying, but they were going to leave.
They were, was that, now, I want to show a hands. Was that one of the most exciting things you've ever seen? The budget here, the judge over there says, that was pretty exciting. Look at this, look at, isn't that wonderful? At any rate, I want to clear the record for all these students out here who may not know. They may never even have heard of Sam Denae, but now they certainly have heard of Sam Denae, even though it is Sam Denae himself telling them about Sam Denae. Those folks back there, I know they're going to go back to school and they're going to ask their teacher, how much, how much do they pay that brilliant erudite man, Sam Denae, to go to those podiums extemporaneously? And they're still looking around for my teleprompter. There is no teleprompter. I get channeling from above. And I also use a little bit of my own heart and brain because my heart is, my heart is designed to try to defend this community. At any rate, Sam Denae, that's me, Sam has never been paid one penny for the hundreds of millions of dollars that he has saved this city in the 20 years that he has been coming to these podiums throughout the community. I told them, I told, I keep telling the mayor, he left, but the city, by the way, when I arrived on the scene 20 years ago, we had a perfectly functional city hall building over there that didn't cost nearly as much as this building. For some reason, five or six years ago, the city hall, city council, not this one, but a few of them, this is a new city council, for those who don't know, four of them are new, so they don't have to take all of the blame. She'd like to hear that, yeah. They don't have to take the blame for the past. At any rate, when I arrived on the scene, there was a perfectly functional city hall over there, brand-new chairs, much more comfortable than these. The city council back then decided they ought to buy this great big building. 30 million dollars later, think what they could do with this budget if they could add, look at that, if they could add 30 million dollars that they paid for this building and renovation, just, and the caviar on the 15th floor, just think, they could wipe out that whole thing and half of the other problems of the budget. And Mr. Chisel knows that too. He's looking right at...
Sam, where do you come up with?
He's staring at me. He's not even smiling.
Sam, where do you come up with the caviar? I've never seen it once.
Boy, you better.
Are they hiding it from us?
Ask the city manager. The mayor, he's always eating it. That's what happened to the caviar.
Do I have a second?
There is a second. And a caution to the students.